The Westmont Village Board Meeting of October the 10th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. And ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addink.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
And Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. Good evening. First item, we do not have any requests for open forum, but if anybody here wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing none, I'll close open forum and we'll move on to reports. My report is first, and today is Double Ten, which is Taiwanese National Day. Happy Double Ten Day to our Taiwan friends and Tiko. Sister City Double Ten Events. Last Saturday, we had a professional performing group, troupe, perform at Westmont High School. It was wonderful. And they come in from, this is like our fourth or fifth touring group that came in and allowed us the opportunity to watch them. Deanne, Representative Deanne Mazzaki received a Friend of Infrastructure. She was awarded this from the Transportation for Illinois Coalition. And that was right here Tuesday, I believe Tuesday morning. So congratulations to her. And we're going to have that gentleman dressed up in the front row, a tax assessment presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Trustee Nero.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it was a while ago that the mayor and I were talking just about property taxes and how important they are to everybody. And it's something that I think always hits home to folks. And I saw our, or one of our Westmont, we have two townships here, one of our majority, I should say, most of it. Unfortunately, I don't live in Downers Grove Township, but Greg Bolts, our Downers Grove Township Assessor, has done an awesome job with a lot of other communities in making this presentation and really gives a lot of information and insight that I know I didn't always know. And I'm sure a lot of us here will learn something. So I do see a lot of residents that came out because it is important, you know? We all have to pay it. We always see it rise, we always see it increase, right? And sometimes we don't know how it's calculated, where it comes from, where those numbers even represent and who it goes to. And so the mayor and I thought it'd be a good idea to ask Greg and invite him in, him and his staff, his Deputy Assessor Anthony Pacili as well. I know they do a great job. The few residents that I've sent to his office, he provides top-notch service, does an excellent job of responding, something that a lot of government officers don't always do. So thanks, Greg, for everything, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say. Thanks.
Thank you for the, are we all set here?
Hello?
I think you're all right.
Are we all live? All righty. Well, again, thank you, Mayor, trustees, clerk, and also we appreciate the opportunity to come out tonight. Again, my name is Greg Bolts and I'm your Downers Grove Township Assessor. Just to give you an idea of the Downers Grove Township portion, again, Westmont is substantially in Downers Grove Township. We cover from 39th Street, the south side of 39th Street, all the way south. So most of Westmont is in Downers Grove Township. Our township, Downers Grove, is actually the roughly, I believe, the third largest assessment district in the state. Cook County is the largest, which, because they're one assessment district, and I think they're like over 1 million parcels. There's another one around, I think there was a combination of three townships years and years ago, I believe it's Rockford Township. I believe we're number three, we're the largest in the county, with over 58,000 parcels, of which my team and I are responsible for assessing 57,000 parcels. We're by far the largest in DuPage County, and we cover from 39th and Woodward in Downers Grove, all the way east to the county line, and all the way south to the county line. So if you'll excuse me, I'm going to kind of sit while we talk, because I do have bad knees. But again, I thank you for the opportunity, because it's important as we come up, this is a general reassessment year. So this is an especially important year to understand what's happening with your assessments on your property. So again, you see a little map here that tells us what Downers Grove Township is. We're going to walk through in the beginning here, a little bit of basic assessment terminology, so people understand how it all works, how it comes together. First of all, the market value. And we start with market value. The market value of a property is the most probable price a property should bring in a competitive and open market, as it says on the screen, with all conditions requisite to a fair sale. Means basically a buyer, a willing buyer and seller, both acting in their own interest. And for instance, you know, when my mother passed away, I can't sell her house to my son for five bucks and say that's the market value. It actually has to be a willing buyer and seller in the open market with all the requisites mentioned, that's the market value. That's what we think we establish market value. And we're working on trying to estimate that as assessors. Assess value. This is a value placed on a property for tax purposes, and it's a basis for determining what portion of the overall tax burden each property owner will bear. In Illinois, and you're going to find out, we're going to say several things tonight, excluding Cook County. So the rules in Illinois are generally the entire state except Cook County. And so assessments are set at one-third of market value. Equalized assessed value, that's called, referred to a lot as EAV, is a result of factors being applied. So we take, for instance, our, the assessed value that I come up with 2018 in this example, the Supervisor of Assessors, which is a county position, they applied a 3.92% factor to Downers Grove Township as a whole. The state, for years, has only put a factor of one, so they haven't done anything to it. As long as we're kind of coming into what the sales ratio studies indicate we should be, they've been sitting at a one value, so they do have the ability to put a factor on top of plus or minus. And I want to reiterate, make sure we point out, the Supervisor of Assessors can factor up or down, depending on what the market is indicating should be done. Recent terms has been moving it up, and that's based on the Department of Revenue comes up with what's called a sales ratio study, looking at three years worth of sales. And they come up with what they think the countywide factor should be, and then the Supervisor of Assessors says this is what happens for each of the townships, and they put a factor on it. And this is in a non-general reassessment year, they put a factor on. The interesting thing is, this is a general reassessment year, and that's where we really get into the details as assessors, and we do it for individual, look at individual neighborhoods ourselves, and you have to come up with every individual neighborhood across the entire township, across the entire county, in this case, and really most of the state, is being reassessed right now as part of, throughout this year, as part of the general reassessment. Again, with the exception of Cook County, that has different rules. They run a three-year cycle, we run on a four-year cycle, which is called the general reassessment. Then we move in, people always want to understand, okay, what does all that mean to me? All right? And a lot of times we talk about, you know, okay, that's great, we talk about market values, we talk about assessed values, equalized assessed values. Well, let's walk through the tax formula, all right? So we start off with a market value, in this case, we chose a value of 320,000 and change. One-third of that equals 106,000, and we started out for 18. We come up with a Supervisor of Assessors put a 3.92% factor on it, turns into a assessed value of 111,000. In this case, we pointed out that there's what's called exemptions. We have a residential exemption, we're going to get into exemptions a little bit down the line, of $6,000, and a senior exemption of $5,000. So the net billable EAV, in this case, would be $100,000. And that's what is then going to go into the calculation of the tax rate is going to be applied to that, unless there's other exemptions. In this case, we only have two exemptions. There's a whole long list of different exemptions. But that gives you an example of the tax formula. Now, for an example of Westmont, you can take a look at, we have different taxing bodies that impact the tax bill for Westmont. So we put, you have an example of, here's a typical, you know, your tax bill for Westmont. And you can see you have DuPage County, the Forest, which gives you a quick example of what different levying bodies there are that impact your, you know, services that are provided for someone that lives in the village of Westmont. And you can see that the major portion of our property taxes come from the schools, and that's the driving factor of, you know, providing the schools, the major portion in DuPage County is provided by the property taxes. All right? I would like to say something, you're going to see me, hear me mention this quite regularly. Please take a moment, and if you get a chance tonight, if you have your cell phones, or if you want to do it when you go home, please take a moment and go to my website at DGTownship.com and sign up for my email list. I will tell you, it's going to say out there, email list, you click on it, it's going to tell you, sign up for the Assessors newsletter. I'm very honest with you, nobody wants to hear from the assessor that often, so I'm not going to bombard you with emails, all right? I'm going to give you a monthly newsletter, there's not that exciting world that I live in. What I am going to tell you is, when I close my books every year, I'm going to send you a notice saying, hey, I've closed. In our state, the legislature requires, legislature requires that the county send out a notice once every four years, all property owners, of which I'm one too, in the township, or if something uniquely changes to your property. Other than that, we get notices once every four years. This way, you'll have a chance, a little reminder, to take a look at, you know, what the value is. The state legislature assumes that we are actively involved in the value of our property and monitoring it, to see if we have questions. All right? Again, because this is how the system works, because we're supposed to be engaged as residents as well as, you know, we as assessors. We use what's called mass appraisal techniques, as prescribed by the state legislature, to come up with, looking at 57,000 parcels. You can imagine if we did individual appraisals on every one of those properties, I'd have to have a staff of 500 people, and that would be a whole nother issue. So we use mass appraisal techniques, as dictated by the state legislature. So that's why it's so important that we're engaged in monitoring what's happening with our property. My commitment to you and my team, I have my chief deputy here with me tonight, he's always with me on these things to make sure we're trying to serve you the best we can. We'll keep you informed of what's going on if you sign up for that list, you know, and that way you'll get a chance to keep informed. And, sorry about the, let's talk a little bit about exemptions. We talked about residential homestead exemption. If you're the homeowner, if you own your property and you reside in your property, you're entitled to a $6,000 residential exemption. You also have, you know, some other examples, you see like a senior, if you're 65 or older and you're entitled to the residential homestead exemption, there's no income limitation on the senior homestead, you're automatically entitled to that, but you've got to sign up for it. Once you sign up for it the first time, then it'll automate, now it'll automatically, it used to be you had to fill out a card every year, now it's going to automatically renew. There's also what's called a senior assessment freeze. That has an income limitation. So for our seniors, if you have a total household income of 65,000 or less, then you can freeze your assessed value. And I'm going to, I know we have a limitation on time, so I'm not going to skip really deep into this right now, but these are, the assessments, exemptions are something that the legislature puts out there, they decide special groups of people that they feel they want to have some kind of benefit to, so they establish these different types of exemptions, and they're really established by the state legislature. There's exemptions for veterans, returning veterans, disabled persons, there's a whole, and it's just a few examples here, but there's a whole long list of them, so you might not know yourself to what you might be entitled to. Talked about the residential homestead, homestead improvement, that's where you do improvements on your home. Up to the first 75,000 of actual value, you can get 25,000 off your assessed value for a four-year period for qualified improvements. Senior homestead, we talked about that, senior freeze, and again, I'm going through quick, this will be, I believe they're going to put this online, so you can take a look at it, but I do, we have some time limitations tonight. So now we're going to talk about types of appeals. And we're going to have some Q and A at the end, I believe, is that correct, Mayor? We're going to have a few minutes for questions and answers. Okay, great. So basically, there's three types of appeals that you can come through. You can do what's called comparable sales, or based on market value, uniformity, and contention of law. First, if we look at comparable sales. And what happens here is, when you, generally, when you have a downturn in the market, we are required, when we do our sales ratio studies, for instance, this year, I had to look at sales from '16, '17, and '18, my team and I did, to do our sales ratio studies. So that's a three-year period. Well, if you're in a downturning market, sales right at the end of the period might be considerably lower. So somebody might say, hey, my value as of 1-1, we're estimating for a three-year period and looking at what's called the median sale. But someone's saying, hey, well, I'm looking at the value right here, so you might want to look at your values and sales in your area and say, someone will come and say, I need to look at my value as of 1-119 and come up with some sales. And they say, we think that for my specific home, the sales ratio study didn't get something that's reasonable. Again, we're looking at estimates here. The only true way to know the value of your exact value is a willing buyer and seller and exchange it. We're all looking at estimates. This is, you know, trying to do an estimate. Typically, the burden of proof for this is preponderance of the evidence. You can include a sales contract on the subject, or the closing statement, an appraisal of the subject. It's very important when you're looking at an appraisal, that you try to get, you know, that you're looking for one that's dated as of the assessment date, and it's for the purposes of assessment. You know, refinance appraisals, we'll look at them, but sometimes, they're really for a different purpose, and a lot of times, the appraiser's looking at it from a whole different angle. So while we're happy to review them for you, a lot of times, people don't understand that they're for an entirely different purpose, and they can come up with entirely different valuations than it would be for if it's a market purpose. But we're happy to review them, but I just want to make sure everybody understands there are two different purposes. And again, you can go look at other people's sales of a similar type homes to come up with stuff, the value. When you're submitting information on the, for your sales, you want to take a look at property record cards, you're going to put in, complete a grid. This information is all on my website, so you can actually fill out a form. It will help you submit your information to us to be able to take a look at. Again, I'm going to try to go through a little bit quickly here, we'll have time for questions afterwards. We talk here again on the appraisal. You know, refinance appraisals are for a different purpose, so it's really important that you try, if you want to go with the appraisal route, I would encourage you to look at sales yourself to start with before you head down the road of, you know, purchasing an appraisal. But again, little information on that, you can follow up with this on the website later. Uniformity. One of the things when you're looking at assessments, we're supposed to establish the value of property at one-third of estimated market value, and it's supposed to be done on a uniform basis. So everybody's treated the same. When you look at a uniformity appeal, that's supposed to say that, hey, my treat is similar to my neighbor who has a similar house, kind of, you know, uniform, so I can't say, well, that person has 17 bathrooms and it's, you know, 5,000 square feet, I got 600 square feet and one bathroom, and they got a pool and I've got nothing. Well, I'm not being assessed the same way. But when I'm looking at similar types of houses, we both have ranches, we both are about the same size, we both have the same amenities, but why, they're assessed way, you know, way lower than I am, well, that's a uniformity issue, and you might want to bring that up. And when we're looking at that, you want to compare how, homes that are similar size properties, similar areas, you want to do something in your area. The burden of proof for this is clear and convincing, and it's very important that you look at properties that are similar in location, design, and size, age, and amenities. But again, the statute says, one-third of, you know, the market value on a uniform basis is what we're looking for. When you're submitting a uniformity appeal, it is recommended, you know, you do include a property record card for every property that you use as a comparable. Is it also recommended that you complete one of our data sheets, one of our grids, for everything? And the more complete your data is on your grid form, if you end up going to an actual appeal, the better shot that when you, if you end up going to the Board of Review or the Property Tax Appeal Board, that we'll talk about in a few minutes, the better part that they'll see all your information, understand it, and be able to analyze it and get a favorable result. Contention of law. This is where you're going to argue that due to a nature of a specific legal issue, we disagree with the assessment, and I'll just tell you that I'm not an attorney, I'm a CPA, I took the courses to be an assessor, and I will tell you that I've only seen a couple of these since I've been the assessor for the last two and a half years. And typically, anybody that's doing this is going to have legal briefs, and they're generally going to be a lawyer that tries to argue this. I see the village attorney up there smiling, you know, they are going to have an attorney that generally presents this. I've seen any private residents that have submitted one of these in their behalf, they're also an attorney general. I've never seen somebody that, like, we CPA's try to act like attorneys sometimes in the business world, and I would never try to write one of these myself. But so again, contention of law, you typically want to talk to an attorney to represent you. Do it. But let's talk about the appeal process. I gave you a little background of what types of appeals there are. Now we're going to talk about the appeal process. The first thing you want to do is reach out to my office. Let's talk about what you're thinking. If you've got some examples, send us your comps, tell us, say, hey, Greg, you know, shoot us an email. Here's four examples of homes that I think, compared to them, I think I'm over-assessed. Give us your examples of what they are, show us, you know, fill out one of the forms that we've got on our thing, you can select your comps right on our website. Give us the example of what you're looking at, and we can take a look at them and review them. And if we find out, hey, you know what, you've got some unique things about your home, you've picked out some good examples, we're happy to review that. I always tell everybody, look, I've got a 29 and a 31-year-old. If we can't get, if we can't get a resolution that you're happy with, there's nothing you can call me that my kids haven't already called me at one point in my life. So I'm okay with that. You can always file with the Board of Review. We're here to help serve you, that's what my team and I, we're here, as Steve said, that's what we're here for, just like your mayor and your village council, you know, we're neighbors, you know, we're here to help work with you the best we can. So if, for instance, we work on it, and we say, look, if this is where we think it's at, you say, well, Greg, I still think it's worth $2. I say, well, I think it's, you know, that six acres of land is worth more than $2. You can always go to the Board of Review and try to convince them that six acres of land in downtown Westmont's not only worth $2, and I'm not going to be offended, all right? But again, I'm going to look a little silly about it, but my point is, you don't, by talking to our office and sending us your information directly and giving us a chance to work through it, within the timeframes we have, we do have some tight timeframes that the legislature allows us, but by giving us the opportunity to try to work together, it could potentially save, you know, going through the official Board of Review process and saves everybody time and effort on that, and we'll do our best to be able to work with you with the time they give us to do it. But if not, you can always file with the Board of Review. And then after that, if they don't get you satisfactory, you don't feel you've been treated fairly, you can go to the Property Tax Appeal Board, which is the state level to be able to review your appeal. All right, hold on, here we go. Oh, this sounds like we talked about before, I guess, you know, you're going to hear this a lot, I keep talking about call your assessor's office. But it's really important, this is a general reassessment year, so there's going to be, we anticipate with 57,000, or actually 58,000, of which we're responsible, 57, a lot of notices going out, so the traffic is going to be really, really high. It's really important, if you can give us as much information on why you believe your assessment is out of whack with examples, you know, reach out to us, you're going to hear me say throughout this entire thing, give us a chance to look at it, we'll do our absolute best to be able to review it for you. But quite often, we can work it out. You know, when I first became the assessor, the day after I got elected, I didn't get sworn in, I got elected in April, I didn't get sworn in until May, I got a call that next day, hey, Greg, something's wrong. I said, well, I'm not actually the assessor yet, I got to wait to sworn in, but I called the office and asked somebody, hey, could you go out and take a look at this property? We found out that the property record card had been input incorrectly, and they thought it was three stories and it was only two stories. That would make a difference on your assessment, you know, with 57,000 records, you know, that particular one, there are occasionally human errors going in the direction. But, you know, our goal is to be fair and equitable. You know, we, I always say, I don't have a horse in the race. We just want to be fair with everybody and get the information as the best we possibly Recently, if you've purchased your home, you may be able to avoid going through an appeal process by sending us your close, your final, you know, signed closing statement and show us what you closed. If it's a proper, you know, purchase of a home, and it, again, it wasn't me selling my mom's home to my son for five bucks, you know, we're happy to review that, and that's considered good evidence for things, so we're happy to review that for you. Filing up the Board of Review. We anticipate closing our books sometime, you know, the county should be posting sometime the middle, toward the end of October here, as you know, later on this month. Once that happens, there's a 30-day clock that starts. And if you're on that email list, you'll get an email from me the day that the clock starts. The county will also send notices out this year to everybody. In an off year, a non-general reassessment year, they won't send notices unless your property was specifically impacted by something other than the factor. But I'll always send that email to you. So if you get on the list, I'll send an email out every, that's my commitment to you, as long as you check your emails, all right? But again, you know, you have a 30-day period, and hopefully during that period, we'll be able to take a look at your questions and do our best to answer everything we can. But you have that 30 days to submit your information to the Board of Review. Then there's three types, comparable sales or market value, uniformity, or contention of law. This is an example now of what a form looks like for the county. This information is on the county website. That's an example of a grid. Once again, I would encourage you to send us your information and give us a chance to take a look at it. We'll do our best during this period, during this 30-day period, to review your information. Now, once the Board of Review is over, now let's say sometime next spring when they're done with their process, and they'll issue notices saying what their decisions are. And I knew if you had, if we've made changes, or we agreed to some kind of change, a notice will go out from the board, the board saying, here's your new assessed value, or we've, whatever their decision is. That then starts a clock where you have 30 days to file with the Property Tax Appeal Board. Same types of examples of what the appeals can be. Property Tax Appeal Board has a nice grid, you want to make sure you complete that as fully as you possibly can. And that gives you an example of, you know, how the process works.
Thank you.
And now, Mayor?
I will open it up. Any questions? Trustee Nero, I think he explained it extremely well.
Yeah, did a good job.
And I do have to say, if you've got a question, Greg is, will gladly answer it for you. He's at all our events, and he takes his job very seriously.
So, thank you.
Anybody in the audience has a question?
Yes, sir.
Can you come to the podium, come to the podium, the microphone?
Are you encouraging people to go to your office first, or is that a requirement, that we should talk to your people first and then apply it to the Board of Review? Because my concern is that if you're too swamped and it's an assessment year and all that, it's possible that the 30 days may lapse, we don't get an answer from you, and then we might miss the chance to apply to the Board of Review.
Sir, we encourage as many people as possible to give us a chance to work with you, and it'll save you time and effort in doing your appeal forms, but we would also say that you don't want to let the 30-day period expire. So, you know, we're early on in the process, we actually, 30 days hasn't started yet now. We do have to wait till we get the actual numbers finalized and everything, we're still in the process of finalizing everything. So, again, it is a general reassessment, it's my first actual general reassessment year, but we would encourage you, we're early on in the process, if you've got examples, you know, reach out to us, send us your comparable sales, it's very helpful if you have, for instance, questions of, here, here's five sales I've got, Greg, and you know, we can, we can throw those, you know, if you've got a sheet that you filled out, email to us. We actually have information forms. If you have specific questions about your properties tonight, Anthony Pacili's my chief deputy, we actually have forms here you can fill out right now if you have questions, so we can take that information from you now, and as we finalize our numbers, we can be, you can kind of, we can take a look at that, so we'll be able to give you a call early on in the process here and be able to follow up with you. So please, for property-specific questions, and as I told people last year, you can file the appeal the very last day if you'd like, but the more we can get resolved as we go along the way, the more time, the more time it'll save you, and it'll save the, you know, all of us as taxpayers, all the same time processing things at the county, but we're here to serve you. You know, it's, I think they were laughing at me, I think last year during the period I had, I think I took Thanksgiving Day off, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day, other than that, we were in making call, returning calls and making, handling things every single day during that period, you know, to be able to help, help the residents. I actually do, and I really enjoy this stuff, you know, so it's, we're excited to help you and do that. So hopefully that answers your question, and you got, anybody else need form, have questions specific about their property? Any seniors that aren't sure they have their senior exemption? senior exemption? You know, because again, that's important. That's, I see a couple faces I know I've talked to in the past, and we've been able to help them get some stuff on there that they weren't, that they hadn't had in the past. Please, you know, fill out a form. Anybody that wants to get on our email list, you can also fill out a form right now, and we can load you onto our email list that way. Happy to answer anything. I don't want to monopolize your whole meeting, but Mayor, it looks like it's-
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions, so thank you. I have two awards to present tonight. I'm going to do one at a time, and I'm going to go in front of the podium. We have two individuals who have donated their time to this community in various aspects. We're going to honor them tonight for what they've done for the Village of Westmont. And I will- The first one, Jan Bartel, please join me.
Hey, Jan.
Janice Bartel. She's been a member of the village's Planning and Zoning Commission for five years. Planning and zoning, if you're not aware, they iron out all the, I say, the issues, most of the issues and the concerns at their meeting, and then they make recommendations to the village board. So you've got a lot of work before them. They had a meeting last night. She's done an excellent job. She's going to start having more grandkids, and she's, she's going to spend the time helping them. The other thing is, she's also, I know, served on the school board for a number of years.
Twelve years.
Twelve years. So her commitment to this community has been remarkable. So again, on behalf of the Village of Westmont, we're going to, I'd like to present this to you and honor you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve this community for as many years as I have, and I appreciate this very, very much. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the village trustees. And John, I didn't get a chance to thank you last night, so thank you for all-
Thanks, Jen, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Second individual, Nancy Martins. Would you please come up and join me?
Yes.
Nancy has performed many community duties and responsibilities, and the first time I met her was when Mayor Addington was created the Promote Westmont Commission. And Nancy, myself, Sue Seneca, were all on that commission. That commission was dealing with the hotel grants, hotel tax grant money, and Nancy was such a big part of that. So she worked also the Celebration of Special Events Commission, Promote Westmont Commission. She was a village trustee, 2001 to 2009, Environmental Improvement Commission, 2015 to 2019, in recognition of over 25 years of hard work and committed service to the Westmont community. I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you.
Oh, I can't, I'm 25 years old, God bless you. I've enjoyed every minute working with Westmont, and wonderful volunteers, wonderful, oh, everybody. It's certainly been a great pleasure. It's enriched my life so much, and for all your support for all these years. I love you all.
And we love you.
Ray Bodge stole her from the hotel in 1986?
I started at the hotel in 1987.
Eighty-seven.
And then I came to the Chamber, I think it was 1994. And so it's been a wonderful ride all these years. I love Westmont, and thank you all for everything you've done for me. Thanks so much.
And I didn't even mention your involvement with the Rotary, and she's truly-
That's right. Part of this community.
This community, so we had to at least present something for you. You've done, and we didn't even mention it there, the Chamber, or being the person at the hotels, or this group's coming in. And even then, you were part of the community.
Oh, my, I love Westmont. Thank you so much, everybody. I love you all.
We love you.
I'm glad.
Would you bring one?
I brought my husband.
Mr. Mayor, Nancy is the reason that I got active in the community. My dad sicked me to the Chamber, and Nancy put me to work right away. She's also the reason that I joined Rotary. She said, this is a group I think you'd like to come, and I joined her for lunch, and I think that was, I don't know, 15 years ago or so. So this really has been a huge part of my life and a huge part of my volunteerism. So thank you, Nancy.
You know, Jan, Nancy, are two individuals who really give back to the community. They're great ambassadors for this community. So again, thank you. Before I move on to the trustees, I always said that if someone comes in, we'll open, open form back up. And I have an individual who, Sean Hugh, 44 West 59th Street. Now I'll let you come to the microphone and ask the questions that you have on this form.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all trustees. My name is Sean Hugh. I own some properties at the Cass and 59th Street. So like the ladies said, I love Westmont. I have been the owner of the property for 16 years. So the reason, because I know Westmont is a safe business and family-friendly community. It is one of the best towns in the state, whose residents are committed to common sense, conservative policies. So here, you know, I have three questions. I don't want to like spend so much time. The first question is, why, you know, down the scope has so far has no public hearing regarding recreational marijuana sales. All neighbors, villages such as Lyle, Whitten, Naperville, Bolingbrook, Hinsdale, already made the decision of, you know, opt out for the marijuana sale. We even have not put it on agenda yet. This first question. The second question, I know I did read the, you know, the board meeting minutes, like on May 9th, there is a finance department meeting, maybe, I did not get a chance to attend it, so maybe discuss about regarding the marijuana sales tax. And August 1st, it did talk about, you know, the referendum, and then last night, there is a meeting about, you know, I think I heard this, the board, or Mr. Mayor, you assigned the planning and zoning department to discuss the options of the zoning. The question is, why does Westmont do the reverse process? Instead of just like let people, like people, or the public hearing, and then, you know, opting or opt out, then discuss this question. The third question is, is Westmont going to invite a professional medical doctor, like, you know, Dr. Viner? He was invited by the mayor of the village to talk, to present the most recent research regarding the marijuana, the addiction, the side effect on health problem, and on the property. And, you know, the, from, those research results are come from the most recent published in the natures, in the science, and in the medical, you know, academic research. That's it.
And anybody else on this subject like to say anything? If not, I'll close, not I'll close open forum, and I'm going to allow the attorney maybe to address?
Sure. And those are all great questions. And just first, a little background on the law, the recreational cannabis law. First, whether the village opts out or not, the state of Illinois has already determined that recreational cannabis is legal in the state. So if the village were to opt out, people can still possess cannabis in, adults can still possess cannabis in Westmont, and still can consume cannabis in the privacy of their homes. And the village can't stop that. And residents of Westmont can go to other towns where cannabis is sold, buy it there, and bring it back to Westmont. So by having a doctor testify, for example, as to the harms of cannabis, and that science, I think, is not exactly proven yet, but I don't know if that would help the situation of whether or not to allow cannabis businesses in town or not, because it would not change whether people are allowed to possess it or not. The subject has been discussed at a village board meeting informally. It hasn't been a public hearing per se. It's been discussed at a couple committee levels in general, and the decision was, first, send it to planning and zoning to determine if cannabis businesses are allowed in town, in what zoning district should they be allowed, and is, are there actually eligible properties to have, let's say, a dispensary or other cannabis use businesses. And that was a public hearing, and anyone from the public could have come and discussed pros and cons, et cetera. Last night at a public hearing, notice was put in the newspaper for that. Secondly, there's no requirement in the state act that the village board hold a public hearing and invite the public to come testify as to whether cannabis businesses should be allowed or not. If the village board takes no action whatsoever, the cannabis businesses are allowed in town. The village board can otherwise vote to opt out by passing an ordinance or resolution that says those types of businesses aren't allowed in town. But again, as a reminder, by opting out, people can still possess marijuana in town and can still consume it in the privacy of their homes. Whether, I think the village board wanted to go through the public hearing process, see what a sales tax ordinance would look like. I know the mayor asked me questions as to the maximum sales rates that the village could charge if a dispensary were allowed in town. And I think it's still up to the village board between now and December 31st, whether they want to conduct some sort of open house, or town meeting, or as you say, a public hearing. That's still up in the open. But I think the village board was in the information gathering period first. And I know one trustee shared information. The county had an extensive public meeting on the issue, and information from that meeting was provided to all the elected officials here. So it's been in the works, but we just haven't had that public hearing, and it's not necessary.
It's not legally required. And when you said the referendum that was discussed at a committee meeting, if a community opts out, the only way to get sales back is a referendum with the people, the residents of the community. That's where a referendum comes in. So-
I get a little bit confused about the comment. So, Mr. Attorney, so you said the board of the trustee already voted to opt out for those?
No, they, I said they do not have to vote to opt in. By taking no action, the village cannabis businesses are allowed in town. They could vote to opt out, as long as they do so by December 31st. But they haven't made any vote yet. They're still gathering information.
The second, last night, there's several people shows up. But I was told by the zoning and, you know, the development, planning department said, no, tonight, you can sit in, but here, but you cannot comment, because it is the planning and the department zoning meeting. It's assigned by the mayor and by the trustee. So if you comment, then you will ban, you know, the chairman will ban the desk. So that's why, you know, I, all those people go back.
And we don't want to get into too much back and forth, but the gentleman that I think just talked to you is right here, and I'm wondering if there's some misunderstanding on that part, too.
Yeah, so just to be clear, I want to explain what I said to a group of people last night who were down in the lobby before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and several of them had stickers on saying opt out. And I was very clear, and please correct me if I'm not being fair in my retelling, I told them they were welcome to come upstairs. It was a public hearing, but that the discussion at hand with the Planning and Zoning Commission was not about whether the village would opt in or opt out. I explained that only the village board, which is you guys, and was not here last night, would be having that discussion and would be able to make that decision. And I encouraged them to come to a village board meeting if they wanted to lobby you guys to opt in or opt out. I said that the discussion last night was just about if you decided that Westmont would allow sales, the Planning and Zoning Commission was having a discussion about where could it be allowed, and what would the parameters be, and what would the rules be, and that the discussion would be limited to that. And I did say that if people did start coming up to the microphone and saying that, you know, Westmont should opt out and sales should be prohibited, that the chairman would say, no, that's not what we're here for. That's for another group to discuss on another night. So I explained that, and then I went out of my way to say that there would be opportunities here in open forum for them to come and talk to you guys.
Thank you. And the one, I don't know if the attorney addressed it or not, but until cannabis became legal in the state of Illinois, no, there wasn't one community that had zoning for it. So the first step is make sure you, if you're going to have sales, you want to make sure you put it where it's, where the village wants it. So that was the first step that we did.
The question is, I mean, from, is my personal opinion, we have not decided opting or opt out, then you try to decide where is the address, where is the place for sale? Then your assumption is not correct, Mr. Mayor. It's like, you know, the people are still alive, and then you discuss, well, I should, you know, have funeral for him or for her. That's not correct, because it's just, we should not use the reverse process. Instead, we use like, most of all are the neighbor made the decisions in the process. That's it.
Well, I opened open forum tonight, so you can come up and give us your opinion. So I already closed it, but I reopened it so you could talk to us.
Okay. Can I just spread for you?
We, no, we're, we, you know, you're welcome back, but we've got a long agenda, and I didn't want to, I wanted to recognize you. So thank you. Thank you.
May I just ask a question?
You could come up.
This is my first time coming to this meeting while you guys were running Westmont. I was just running my personal life. So thank you all for doing it all these years and doing it consistently. My only question is that when and if this discussion were to take place, when you guys will make a decision, would the public be allowed in for comments, or at least you'd be allowed to listen in what your thoughts are, and where would I go to find that such a meeting is taking place? I just happened to check the DG.com website today, and I found out that this tax meeting was happening, and that's why I came. So, that's all.
Again, resident, anyone is welcome to come up to the podium during, during any agenda item and comment on it. Open forum is for anybody that wants to talk about something not on the agenda. So every two weeks, we meet. So that opportunity is there for everyone. So I hope that answered-
And to your question, every village board meeting, the agenda is posted on the village website, and it's also posted here at village hall. And if a subject involving recreational cannabis ever appears on a village board agenda, anyone in the public's welcome to come, listen, and certainly is welcome to comment.
Yes.
And the public newspaper that you mentioned, which one is that you, based on?
That was for the zoning hearing. There, by law, we have to publish notice of any public hearing in the newspaper, and that's published in the Bruce Suburban Life Newspaper.
Also on the website, you can sign up for notify me, and that'll alert you to every agenda.
The sign right there, sir, that notify me, if you sign up for that.
That'll give you an announcement. So, all right, we will finally get to the trustee reports.
How about the clerk first?
Oh.
Kick him in the knee.
I just want to report on the walking to Hinshu. We have one more month to go, and we all walked 4,261.71 miles in the month of September, I would assume. Is that right? And secondly, remind everybody that the village offices are closed on Columbus Day, October 14th, for staff in-service. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm going to turn over here to trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee is December 19th, 4:30 PM, right here at village hall. And then next, I want to highlight something that I thought was pretty neat and slick that was done by, well, mainly by one Westmont person, and as well as the reason that made me see it was because of another Westmont resident, former athlete at Westmont High School, Eric Andrews is his name. He happens to be the manager at Orange Theory Fitness in Westmont. Does an awesome job there, younger guy, and I was just browsing through some social media one day and saw that he was going to be on this Move the Beans podcast. And for those of you that haven't heard of it or seen it, next time you're in the car, download it to your phone. It's free. It's done. It's done. This gentleman who started it, again, a Westmont resident, not Eric, different gentleman, but the reality is, this is a pretty slick thing that he did, just discussing his role with Orange Theory, how it impacts people locally. Thought it was kind of neat to see, you know, good Westmont representation, unique, something different that you don't see every day. So if you haven't listened to it, obviously listen to this one. It's personal to me, but also listen to the other nine episodes. It's pretty unique, and he ties a lot of it to local, even local athletes, and talking a lot about Westmont. So it's kind of cool. That's, I believe, oh, one more thing I do have. October, we're gonna be doing a tree planting at Marker School, October 28th. This is gonna be with the Ecology Club students, so another neat thing that we do here at Westmont. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. The next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be held October 24th at 4:30 right here in Village Hall. Community events include the Wicked West Fest, which is next Saturday, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, the October 19th, from 10:30 to 2:00, downtown Westmont. We have the Trick or Treat Trails. We have costume contests, pumpkin smashing, casket races, and a whole lot more. So visit our website and the westmontchamber.com for additional details. Wicked West Fest scarecrow voting. We've placed 25 Wicked West Fest scarecrows that are now on display throughout downtown Westmont, and voting has begun for your favorite scarecrow. Vote early and often at westmontchamber.com. Winners will be announced on November the 1st. Westmont Pet Promenade and Touch a Truck, which is a long time coming, it was originally scheduled for May, is now gonna be held Sunday, October 27th, at 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Ty Warner Park. Lots of family and pet activities to enjoy, so come on out for that one.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Trustee Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. Westmont First will meet on October 21st at 6:00 PM at the library, and will continue to work on the complete count for the census that's gonna take place next year. The Environmental Improvement Committee meets November 4th at the library. We just completed a native tree and shrub sale with a lot of help from Mr. John Yater, and they sold 77 trees and shrubs, and the proceeds from that went to Richmond Gardens. There is a tree giveaway that we're gonna sponsor. If you visit the EIC booth, you can sign up for a chance to win a tree. And then we are also doing the Halloween Lights Recycling on October 19th, from 11:00 to 2:00, the drop off at the lights at the Wicked West Fest, the EIC tent. And then at November 2nd, Saturday, from 9:00 to noon, we are collecting the pumpkins after Halloween, so for pumpkin composting. And at that same time, we're doing the light bulb recycling at the local library, and we'll accept T6 and TA light bulbs. It's a drive-through service. You just pull in, and we take the stuff from you. You don't even have to get out of your car. And then lastly, I am announcing that there's a free paper shred event that's hosted by Diane Mazzaki in partnership with the Chamber, and that'll be at the Wicked West Fest. It's free, and that's also October 19th, 10:30 to 1:30, right in front of you there on that screen. That is all, Mayor.
And it's at One North Cass? It's at the Chamber office?
The location's, thank you, One North Cass.
Thank you. Trustee Eddington.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening at 4:30, we had the Community Development Committee meeting. There were several items on the agenda. I want to highlight a couple of them for folks. The first one was that some time ago, back, we had passed a ordinance talking about these cargo containers that crop up in and around town, probably more at the businesses, but also at people's residences. And we had passed an ordinance to start getting them removed, and several businesses came to the meeting and talked about the hardship that that would cause for them because of what they use these containers for. So we've kind of taken a step back and are going to be looking at working with some of these folks, give them a little more time in some cases, or even maybe develop a policy where they can come and ask for, for the, for that to be waived if there's a good reason. So we're working on that, but we're listening to the, the businesses in town. There were, I think, 15 or 16 of our businesses were here at the meeting to discuss it. So we are going to continue to work with them. We also talked a lot about the situation, and again, this is only with a few homes in town, but in the parkways, there seems to be a few that have allowed the natural growth of flowers and bushes and things to become a little bit overgrown and a little unsightly. So what we've done with tho, with that issue is we've asked the Environmental Improvement Commission to take that on as a, and come back to us with some recommendations. There's some positives to the, this natural growth because it does help with water retention and, and also with, with storing of water, but at the same time, if they're not maintained properly, they start overgrowing the sidewalks and other places, and then it becomes difficult for you and your, your kids, for instance, to walk. So we're asking Environmental Improvement to give us an assist on that, and, and they will do that and then report back to us. We also received a quarterly report, and I think as everybody knows by now, there is an awful lot going on in the community, new homes being built. The auditorium, of course, is, is close to being encapsulated and, and starting to work inside. That's still scheduled for next spring, I believe, for, for opening. 63rd Street is starting to go above ground with LA Fitness and with Raising Cane. So a lot of good things, folks, a lot of very positive things from an economic development standpoint. So it was a very good meeting. Our next one is in January, and again, you're always, everyone is always welcome to come. The other two things that I have real quickly is just to say thank you to the people in town. The Westmont Lions Club last weekend did their first, it was a resurrected thing called Oktoberfest. It turned out to be a little bit of a success. We're very pleased with it. I think other people were too. Now we'll tweak it a little bit for, for the future, but it came off very nice. A lot of people seemed to enjoy the music. Again, a lot of it was the Oompa or, or that style, and of course, the food that was served also fit in with the Oktoberfest theme. But I thought it went, of course, they did it here in front of Village Hall, and it really, I thought, went over well. So they had also a health fair connected to that that turned out to be very good. We had our hearing bus, and I think we screened about 20 people at that. And then we also had from a blood, a blood donor bus, and I think they did 15 or 16 people came and donated blood. So from that side of the street, that also turned out to be a much, a very much of a positive. Lastly is, again, Lions Club, not this weekend, but next weekend is our Candy Day, which is Friday, the 18th, but some people will also work on the 19th, Saturday. Again, we'll be in front of stores at the train station on Friday, and also on the street corners. Please be careful and, and protect my fellow members and I, but this is a very important day. This is a million-dollar fundraiser for the Lions of Illinois, and the money that's raised goes towards sending kids to summer camp and a lot of other things, buying eyeglasses, hearing aids, and a program that we call low-vision screening, which is folks who have a sight problem for the equipment that helps them just do the things in their daily lives. So money comes for a lot of good purposes, so be generous, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn to trustee Marie Johannik Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be November 21st, 4:30 here at Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend. I'm gonna start with the Police Department. The drug, the RX Drug Take Back is scheduled for October 26th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Westmont Police Station and at the Mariano's at 150 West 63rd Street. I know that's always a very appreciated event, so thank you for hosting that. And then there is also going to be a vaping awareness presentation, October 16th, 6:30 at the Westmont High School Auditorium. Parents, students, and in the entire community are encouraged to attend and participate. Topics presented include the following: vaping and e-cigarettes, health concerns, addiction, what to look for, how to help. So that is, be, feel free to attend that as well. There's been a lot of news on, about vaping, so everyone is invited to attend that. Moving over to the Fire Department, and everyone probably knows it's Fire Prevention Week. Tomorrow night is the Fire Department Silent Parade. It begins at 7 o'clock from Hinsdale. Residents are invited to gather along Chicago Avenue with flashlights to honor those who have lost their lives to fires. Hoping the weather will be cooperative, and everyone is invited to tend to come out. If anyone has never been to it, I strongly suggest you come on out and support our peep, our fire department and everyone who has lost their lives in a fire. And then the Fire Department Open House is Saturday, October 12th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's going to include hot dogs, chips, demos, games, the bounce house, and more. And for everyone who doesn't know, the firehouse is, the open house is going to be at the Johannik Fire Station at 6015 South Cass Avenue. So everyone come on out, let's support our fire department, and it's always a fun time, and I want to thank everybody for coming out and all their support for both the police and the fire department. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have our next Economic Development Committee will be on November 6th at 9:00 AM, and we meet right here at the room next to the Village Hall. Our last meeting was yesterday, and it was exciting. I believe the mayor, clerk, trustee Guzzo, trustee Little, trustee Barker, and myself were all in attendance with manager May, and we had the pleasure to tour the FMC Naterium at Ty Warner Park. The project is well underway and has projected open date of March 2020, but Mary Ann also said that that could easily go to April or May. Now, bear with me, I took notes as she was going through all these things on my phone, so she really highlighted that they're hoping to get a FINA event, which in the swimming world is a training facility, a training ground to get to the Olympics. With those events, they have a 1,200 seats it's going to host, and she would say that those could be filled, and then plus the amount of swimmers attending. So currently, that FINA meets in, in Indiana. So for them to travel to Indiana, they have to fly to Chicago, collect it, get on another plane, and then fly to Indiana. One of the advantages of the Naterium here in, in Westmont, obviously, they can fly into Chicago, charter right to us and, and to our hotels, and, and stay right, you know, and have the stadium available. And Mary Ann has also already worked with Hilton and is going to reach out to other hotels to reserve blocks of rooms, so when swimmers and also visitors come in, they will be able to stay at our local hotels and eat at our local restaurants. Currently, she has our, a senior state meet for July of 2020 that is already locked in. She will be providing community classes, family days, to all Westmont residents, and I think one of the highlights on the classes for seniors is she's actually doing a padded pool. So this is less stress and less wear and tear on the body, which I think a lot of us were, were really amazed at, that there's going to be a pad in the bottom of that pool. And again, that is a co-op with the, the Westmont Park District and, and, and the village, and we're all working together. The one thing that I think a lot of us were really taken back by was the quality and consistency of the, of the construction. And one of the, the main highlights that they're gonna have is the Safe Sport for Kids. A lot of this comes after the problems the, the past Olympic teams had and so forth. So there is a high-tech monitoring system where kids and adults are always monitored, and they know where they're at. The separate shower rooms for coaches, and then also for the, for the swimmers, and, uh, sorry, I'm following my notes here, so, and, and again, when they're hosting meets, then they won't intermingle in the same showering areas and so forth. So again, April through June of 2020, Mary Ann is working with local businesses to run the retail store, and overall, she wants to highlight the pool as being a training ground for the road to the Olympics. So, I know I was long-winded, you guys should be used to that, and, so, but very exciting things, and just an impressive building, and what an asset to have Mary Ann here in the town. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Has anybody seen none?
Not much on it.
Manager May to please read.
Thank you. On the consent agenda this evening, first, we have village board meeting minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held September 26, 2019. This is followed by finance ordinance number 11 in the amount of $1,620,123.74. There are two purchase orders. First one is Thomas Engineering Group, $81,306.96. This is for the CBD LEC. This is the construction engineering portion. Second purchase order, Napleton Fleet, $25,903, and this is a replacement detective vehicle. And as noted there, this was a vehicle that, you know, was budgeted last year, was supposed to be acquired last year, and through variety of delays, is in this budget cycle. It's not specifically budgeted, but it, the funds are in that vehicle replacement plan fund. That concludes the, well, the total of the purchase orders is $107,209.96. That brings the total of purchase orders and the finance ordinance to $1,727,333.70.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. And a question. Anybody in the audience? Any ordinance? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Unfinished business, increase of available tobacco license. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class B tobacco license by one for Westmont Management DBA Click Sports Bar and Grill, 6010 South Cass Avenue in Westmont. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulholland.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. With me is Mike Hussein, the owner of Click Sports Bar and Grill, and Mike is at 6010 South Cass. Mike has applied for a tobacco license. This was continued over from the last board meeting. Due to miscommunication by staff, we, he didn't quite get the message to be at the meeting, so he's here tonight. Trustee Eddington, I remember, two of the questions were, one of the questions was on vaping. I'll let Mike talk about his tobacco use, but he has told me that he is not gonna have anything to do with vape, and he has more issues, he'll explain to you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Hussein.
Yeah, I, I was looking for basically not selling the cigarettes, and no, we have nothing like that. So we have just like a corner, we make like a, the hookah bar, you know, we, we recently, in, in my other facilities, you know, we just have a place, you know, people come and drink and enjoy the hookah, hookah bar, too. So that's how I was looking, applying for the lic, of a tobacco license.
And I don't know if the board saw that, but a restaurant, we don't have any restaurants that have a tobacco license right now, so, um, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question.
I have a question.
Trustee Little.
What are our restrictions for smoking inside?
Uh, there's, we're governed by the Illinois Smoke Free Act, or the Smoke Free Act of Illinois, which has been adopted by the village, and the village has the authority to enforce that. That prohibits any sort of smoking of tobacco products indoors. So I don't know if the hookah lounge was gonna be outdoors on the patio or in, indoors, I assume outdoors.
It's outside, outdoor patio.
So there is no restriction on smoking outside, other than you have to be at least 15 feet from an entrance or exit, and 15 feet from any open windows or other type openings. Interestingly, the Smoke Free Act does not have a prohibition, while it's not allowed in restaurants, you can't smoke inside a restaurant, it mentions nothing about an outdoor dining area. So if you were to even consider this, I think you're, you do or plan on selling food outdoors during nice, uh...
I mean, we're planning to, you know, if yes, because we have, we have, I have like about 15... 15 in restaurants in Illinois. If we're doing outside, you know, I understand, inside according to state law, we cannot have any kind of tobacco, any kind of smoking is not allowed. But outside, they allow that. If you have by the door, if it's 15 feet, you know, by exit door 15 feet, they allow that too.
But you're going to sell the tobacco that would...
No, I'm not planning to sell tobacco, but this hookah bar, you know, you come in, and so we prepare the hookah, and you can smoke there and leave it there and walk away without that.
Yeah, I believe the tobacco license is only for the sale of tobacco. Otherwise, anyone can bring their own tobacco, cigarettes, whatever.
The hookah tobacco, yeah, we sell it. They're not going to bring that, no. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Other comments? Trustee Addington.
Yeah, we don't have any at this time at any of the restaurants. I really think this is creating a bad precedent, and I think once we open this door, for one, you're kind of opening the door to anybody else who has an outside area that may not be as open as his, and I guess I want, I think I also want to point out that the back end of his open area is residential.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that, all those residents, they're already up in arms about that location. But, I mean, for me personally, I mean, I know we don't have it, this isn't my thing, I'll be honest with you, I don't know if I'd ever want to go eat somewhere where people were smoking, you know, outside, even if it's selling tobacco. I think it kind of disgusts me personally, but to each their own. I just don't know, Mayor, I mean, this seems goofy to me. I don't know, you know, I know, I don't know if I would want to live behind that either, you know, all that, I don't know. I mean, I think it's more of a personal thing, but the reality is, John, I guess the question is for you, is, I mean, I guess you kind of already answered it, I mean, we really don't have much control, if we allow it, on what they can do in the patio. I mean, it's just going to be a free-for-all with smoking whenever they want, all they want?
Well, you do have some controls. For example, and I'll get to vaping, I was going to address some vaping regulations under miscellaneous tonight, but although the Smoke Free Act of Illinois does not specifically prohibit smoking of tobacco products, which would include hookahs, in an outdoor area where food service is allowed, some communities have been more strict and put that prohibition into place. That says as long as you're serving food in an outdoor area, no smoking is allowed, even if you're 15 feet from an entrance exit, and that's something you can consider, which would apply to all businesses.
And part of it too, is like the transaction too, kind of goofy.
Trustee Barker.
My question is, is your intention to have people, patrons, having food outside in the hookah at the same time, or at separate times?
I mean, separate time, because we have, I have like about, from the door to almost the area, it's about 20 feet away, and it had a huge patio, so on the right...
Yeah, I've been on that patio with a prior, you know, prior business, but they would occur in separate space or at the same time?
Oh, if the food's serving and the hookah's...
Right, would people be out there eating, and then somebody over there is lighting up a hookah?
Right.
And I'm over here eating a cheeseburger?
Right.
And I've got to smell that because the wind's blowing my way.
So I want to give you the information about that too, you know, as Steve mentioned it, you know, this is disgusting. 15, the residential is about 30, 35 feet away from the patio, which we locate it. Tobacco cigarette is a more, they have a smell. The hookah don't smell, first of all, you know, it doesn't, not too much, you know, for that too. And your answer is like about, between hookah side and the food side, it's going to be about 15 feet.
So you plan on doing it simultaneously with a separation?
If you guys allow that, if you say no food over there, then you're not going to have a food over there, so.
Tom, as far as the restrictions on the outside use, we already put that in place with the liquor license.
Correct. The restrictions on the license for the outdoor use, the patio, outdoor patio cannot be used or occupied by patrons, cannot be occupied after 10:00 p.m. on Sunday through Thursday evenings until 1:00 on Saturday and Sunday mornings, and his liquor license would go till 2:00.
And no amplified sound out there either?
Correct. There's no televisions or amplified noise, including music is allowed in the outdoor patio area at any time.
And that's being friendly to our neighbors. So is there anybody in the audience who has a, come on up to the podium and state your name?
My name's Doug Carmichael, and I'm a local resident. I happen to, I have a question, is the hookah the same as shisha?
No.
No.
It's not.
Okay, I lived in the Middle East for 10 years, and the shisha mixture that has tobacco in it, it doesn't, I mean, it's a perfumey smell, it's very pleasant, it's very pleasant to smell, so I don't know what hookah, I wondered if it was the same thing. That was my question.
So if you live in the Middle East, you know, so all the royal family and those people use hookah, and all the labor people, they use shisha.
Okay. Well, I was with the labor people.
That's why he's aware of it, right?
Thank you.
So those are luxury things.
Anyone else from the audience? If not, I'll turn to any other trustee comments?
So, I guess just an explanation, if I have a hookah pipe?
Yeah.
And I want to have some raspberry flavor, or whatever the flavors would be, is that I would go to the counter and I would buy that, and then I would put it in the receptacle, and then what, you light it, or is it heated, or how does it work?
If you come in and say whatever, the raspberry, strawberry, so you order the server, they have prepared and everything ready to give it to you.
Okay, so then would it have a receptacle then, and then, and in theory, you could take that off and put more in there, or put a different kind in there?
It's already, on the top, we already seal it. So what have, where the tobacco goes in the first, and there's a charcoal on the top, and you have to foil it and tighten it.
Okay.
So it's something, I understand, you cannot take it off something from pocket and put it in there too.
Okay, yeah, just because I had concerns with recreational cannabis coming and so forth, is, you know, could you switch it from what you purchased at the counter, and all of a sudden, you know...
Is already prepared, you're not going to have something loose tobacco in your hand to be able to do it. Because on the top, we have a seal it, so as soon as you try to open it, you know, you're going to burn yourself, and we notice it. So that's the way we do it at other places, we kick them out. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I actually have a question for our attorney. Okay, this is to approve a tobacco license. There's nothing that's saying it's specific to a hookah. We have several other restaurants that have patios. They could technically come on in and apply for a tobacco license as well, because this isn't just limited to hookah, it's a tobacco license.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's why I said I think it's a dangerous precedent. I think we're opening a door, I really do.
Mayor, just one comment, if I just wrap up, you know, and I commend you and thank you for your investment in the location, and, you know, I'll probably be a good customer. I used to go to the old location quite a bit when I lived there. I just have a personal thing with the tobacco side being in a restaurant and ordering it, and that's where my comments stem from. So thank you for the business, I think it's a great concept, and I look forward to checking it out.
Sure. Any other, and again, this wasn't mentioned originally when he came in for the liquor license or the plans for it, so this came up after.
Correct. The two licenses are separate, they're handled separately. Mr. Hussein did mention to me when we were doing the liquor background check, that this was, he was looking into this, and then after that liquor license was approved, he then came and approved, applied for the tobacco license.
All right. Mayor, can I... Yes, trustee Barker.
Just, I guess my concern is, you know, I was really ignorant of the whole concept, so it's all new to me. So I don't feel qualified to say yes, you know what I mean? But I just, I didn't know anything about it. Now I do, but I thank you for that, but...
Mr. Hussein, it seems to me like you were, you're very close to opening? It seems like that there's been kind of a, I'm walking through the cars in the parking lot, and I haven't seen any cars over the last couple of weeks, so are we, are we getting very close, or?
See, I was out of town, and I mentioned it, but I have a 50 stores, so I was busy on my other side, but there was no excuse, but hopefully within two weeks, we're going to open it. Because the manager was supposed to be hiring and training people, he was not doing his job, so we just hired the new manager, and you will see the car.
But I will tell you the...
I have, I have, I mean, I have no idea where to find the people nowadays, you know, it's really tough to be there.
That's tough for everybody, but there is a lot of word on the street, everyone is really anticipating your opening, so I know, I've heard it from people at Mariano's, everyone is wanting to know when you're going to be open, so, you know, we're hoping you have great success there.
Thank you, thanks. I just need your support, Scott.
No other questions? I'd ask for roll call on the motion to approve.
Trustee Addington.
No.
Trustee Guzzo?
No.
Trustee Barker?
No.
Trustee Little? Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
No.
Motion fails, so everything else is a go. I have no problem. Okay, thank you. Thank you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
New business, A, Appointment of Committee Members. Board to consider motion approving Mayor Gunter's appointment to the Economic Development Committee of the following residents: Ms. Kim Heller, Ms. Jill Ron, and Mr. Patrick Ryan. And this is Harold, trustee Barry's committee, and he recommended, put his blessing on this, so I didn't want to not have him.
Far be it from me to question her.
Do we even need to vote on it then?
I do need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second to approve. Any comments, questions, seeing none, roll call. This puts it at nine, there'll be nine voting members on that.
And just great, strong candidates here. Of course, most of us all know Jill Ron, former Mayor Ron's wife, and been active in the community. Kim Heller is probably, you know, the number one realtor in town, and Patrick Ryan is a businessman and active and lives in the community, so all good input and from different walks of life, and that's what we want, is to get everybody's input, so we're looking forward to having them.
Your committee does what?
Economic development is what we try, and with Larry leading the way, we're doing a great job.
So even before development goes to planning and zoning, they get an opportunity to go to economic development, and your comments and concerns?
And just as an advisory, is what we do.
Your team just got a lot better.
All right.
Finally.
Finally? I asked for roll call.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. B, Appointment of Commission Member. Board to consider motion approving Mayor Gunter's appointment of Mr. Matt Scales to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had a group of us that interviewed Doug Carmichael as the Chair of Public Planning and Zoning, Bruce Sylvester, Steve May, and myself, and we came to the conclusion that Matt will be a huge asset to, and he'll come next month, I believe, and tell the board a little bit about him. So I need a motion to approve my appointment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments?
Just a reminder, he needs to be sworn in, whether it's at a Village Board meeting or right before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at some point.
Maybe two weeks from now, he can come and swear in. Okay. One last comment, we have one vacancy. I think the committee is interviewing someone within the next two weeks, the goal is to have that person appointed, I'm hoping, at our next Village Board meeting, which is two weeks, so they can attend the November meeting. So that's the goal. So I'd ask for roll call.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, Intergovernmental Agreement, Department of Health Care and Family Services. Board to consider ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Health Care and Family Services regarding ambulance billing rates. Chief Riley?
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Department is requesting the village enter in this agreement with the Department of Health Care and Family Services to provide greater cost recovery for emergency medical services provided to Medicaid patients. And Mayor, if I could, I'll just give the board a little update on this, so over the years, the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association has been working with the Illinois Department of Health and Family Services for several years to develop a program for fire departments to receive supplemental Medicaid payments. These payments are commonly known as Ground Emergency Medical Transportation, or GEMT. This program is designed to capture federal dollars that are already funded to reimburse obligated providers to transport Medicaid patients. Please note that this is not a grant program. Similar programs are operating successfully in other states. Illinois' application was submitted in early September and is expected to be approved before the end of the year. Just a little background for the board, approximately 20% of the patients that the Westmont Fire Department transports are Medicaid patients. You've heard me stand before you and let you know that we have the highest elderly population in DuPage County, right here in your hometown. We collect a very small percentage of our normal ambulance fees resulting to that. This results in approximately $500,000 in ambulance fees for Medicaid patients that we do not collect annually. We are in the obligated provider of emergency response and transportation, and we are required by law to respond, treat, transport a patient without regard for their ability to pay. This program is designated to close the funding gap for obligated providers. Since reimbursement formula was based on an average cost for area providers, not Westmont specific, we do not know the exact amount per call that will be reimbursed. However, since our calculated costs are above what we currently charge, and because we are more efficiently provider than many other departments in the area, we are expecting a benefit from the average cost reimbursement formula, the supplement Medicaid payments could be in excess of $300,000 in revenue to the village. The supplement Medicaid, I'm sorry, the reimbursements are expected to begin around the beginning of the year for services provided in late half of 2019. Two other things, really quick, the village needed, two things that needed to be done to supplement, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Public Health, which is coming before you this evening, but we had to ask the manager and the mayor to previous sign this. We got this and had a deadline within a week to provide all the documentation by October 1st, and, you know, my staff and along with Jim Conley specific and Ruth Olson, you know, 40 hours probably to get this document, and I can tell you, we were only one of the area fire departments to get this document turned in on time. So a lot of staff time, a lot of quick, it had to be a number one process. Obviously, we want to be on that Medicaid, getting that reimbursement. And finally, the second is to file the detailed report, as I just explained, we got that done in time. If there's any questions that I can answer for you, I'm here, if not, we're looking for your approval to please approve this ordinance.
I do have to say, it's the first time I've seen Finance Director Parker smile.
Because it's coming in.
He's usually blaming me, Mayor, but I think he's okay with this.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Addington. Second, Barry.
Motion made in second. Comments?
He's ready.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Little, or Nero, I'm sorry.
Did you vote yes?
Yeah, I said yes, sorry.
Motion passes. T, new business T, Burlington Northern Santa Fe Lease Agreement. Board to consider ordinance to authorize the village manager to execute an updated station agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Company to lease parcels of land adjacent to the railroad line. Finance Director Parker?
This is largely a renewal of the current lease, there's not a lot of substantive changes, though we are cleaning up some language and making things match more closely to our current practices.
Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
So move, Guzzo.
Second, Little?
Motion made in second. Comments? Anybody seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous. I know, John, you already covered the...
Yeah, I just, to flush that out a little bit more, I know Trustee Addington was concerned and asked me a question about some of the larger cities that are banning some of the flavored vape products. And my initial opinion, without diving into a, spending a lot of time and doing a lot of research, was as a non-home role community to ban what is currently a lawful product. Probably can't do that, let's see what the state does. But there's also a concern, I think, expressed about vaping indoors in general. And as I expressed earlier, the Smoke Free Act of Illinois does not address e-cigarettes or vaping whatsoever. It does address it as far as higher education campuses funded by, you know, like State of Illinois, University of Illinois campus, you cannot vape or smoke anywhere on a campus. So they amended the act, or they created an act as to campuses, but not elsewhere. But the village has the authority to not only prohibit smoking indoors, but also prohibit vaping. I just wanted to make that, make you aware of that. And if so, that can, you know, something you guys can discuss.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody had a chance to see the newspaper this morning, but they had two articles in the Sun-Times. One talked about just some of the things that have been going on and had a picture of some product that had been confiscated, I think it was up someplace in Minnesota. The names on these products was cherry pie, apple jacks, you know, you know what that's geared toward. And in this case, that happened to be a picture of product that was being sold illegally. So of course, that's why it was confiscated. There was another article this morning about this, this whole thing that had to do with the fact that a lot of these people that are getting sick are buying the mechanics,